Good morning. I called to order our Wayne County Commissioners Meeting on November the first. Welcome, and invocation today will be by Commissioner Wayne Acock along with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready?
Yep.
Dear and Father, thank you today. Thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you be with us today. We make the right decisions for the citizens of Wayne County. We ask that you be with our men and women in uniform, our first responders. And we have Veterans Day coming up soon. We ask that you be with all of the veterans, men and women that has sacrificed so much for us to have the freedom that we have today. And we ask for you to be with the families of our service, men and women that didn't make it home, the ones that gave the ultimate sacrifice. We ask that you be with them, those families. And we just ask that leaders of our state and our nation can come together and make the right decisions for the betterment of our state and our nation. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our next item here, I'll entertain a motion of approval of our minutes of October the 18th.
So move.
All right, we have a motion, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And discussion and adjustment of the agenda.
Yes, sir. Addition of a number eight under the consent agenda should be add of purchase of a lot on at the corner of Dakota and Fourth Street for the purchase by the county and with a appropriate budget amendment.
Okay, that'll be added to item eight on the consent agenda. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And special presentations.
Okay, under number one is a motion to approve the 2022 Operation Green Light for Veterans proclamation and the NCACC video.
Here will be two seconds here. Was not prepared for this, but it would be. This is something that I started with Annie Smith with our Veteran Services Agency several months ago. Thanks to NACO and the NCACC, that's the National Association of Counties and County Commissioners. And so it's very important and particularly for Wayne County since we are home to Seymour Johnson. So the proclamation is, whereas Wayne County is home to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base as well as veterans from across all branches in the military, and whereas the residents of Wayne County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces, and whose contributions and sacrifices have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Wayne County seeks to honor these men and women who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community by working side by side with us, serving in our churches and with our organizations, as well as in the American Legion Veterans of Foreign Wars, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members access more than $52 million in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually with an estimated 20% increase expected in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that up to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from the military to civilian life, and many are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas Wayne County believes all veterans, especially those in our community, deserve special recognition for their sacrifices. Now therefore, with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby declares November 7th through November 13, 2022, as a time to salute and honor the service of our veterans, and encourages its citizens to recognize them and their immeasurable sacrifices by displaying a green light in a window of their businesses and homes during that week. And we do have our facilities director, Kendall Lee, working on doing that for our buildings. And I'm going to find the video real quick.
Oh, hi. Yeah, I'd like to tell you about a special project we're working on here at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. It's called Operation Green Light. We're encouraging North Carolina counties and all of our residents to take part in an effort to honor, recognize, and support our nation's veterans. In support of veterans statewide and across the country, this Veterans Day, our association is joining counties all across America, along with our friends at the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers, to shine a light on and honor those who've served our country. And we're asking our county governments to light up our county courthouses and our county government buildings. We've asked our friends at the state level to light up state government buildings, and we're asking you to light up your homes and your offices. Lighting them up green will bring attention and awareness to our veterans, as well as those who serve our veterans and our county veteran service offices. So between November 7th and November the 13th, buy the green light bulb and join us in Operation Green Light. Veterans Day, November the 11th, it's right around the corner. It'll be here before you know it. So help us get ready. You can buy these?
You can find green light bulbs at amazon.com or at your local Lowe's Home Depot store.
Really? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Number two is a motion to approve the 2022 Farm City Week proclamation.
I'll ask Kevin Johnson to come up.
Well, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to share this proclamation and tell you a little bit more about our Farm City Week banquet. Proclamation, whereas the growth and development of the county and the well-being of all citizens are dependent upon cooperation and exchange between the two essential environments of our society, farm and non-farm families. And whereas studies have shown agriculture and agribusiness industries together bring in over $1 billion of income into the county, which represents 21% of the county's income and 20% of the county's employment. Whereas Wayne County's farm income makes a significant contribution to the economy of our county with over $450 million in gross farm gate receipts last year. Whereas Wayne County is home to Mount Olive Pickle, the largest pickle company in the United States, and home to Goldsboro Milling Company, the parent company of Butterball Turkey, the largest producer of turkey products in the United States. Whereas Wayne County was recognized by Farm Futures Magazine as the fifth best place to farm. Whereas whenever we live, or excuse me, wherever we live, on the farm or in the city, we share common needs: food for our nourishment, forest products for our shelter, and paper and fiber for clothing and other materials. And whereas if Wayne County is to continue to prosper, it is important that farm and non-farm residents appreciate and understand one another. Whereas Farm City Week provides an unparalleled experience for farm and city people to become better acquainted. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 16th through 23rd, 2022 to be Farm City Week and a week of thankfulness. So with that said, while we appreciate agriculture, our Farm City Week banquet is on Monday, November 21st at 6 o'clock. I hope everyone's received their invitation. You know that's a big event for us and a big event for agriculture. We always induct a couple members into the Agriculture Hall of Fame. This year, especially excited Ray Starlin, not sure if y'all know him, but he served on Tom Tillis's staff. He's worked for Prestige, and he was in President Trump's. He was working on ag programs for him in the White House. He currently serves with the North Carolina Chamber, but he'll be here. It'll be our guest speaker. Thank you. Also is getting ready to release a book, and so he may have some copies of his book available. But anyway, we're really excited about that and look forward to having y'all there.
Great. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2022 Farm City Week proclamation.
So move.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Check on Bessie for when you get back.
I'll do that.
Check on Bessie.
Thank you, Kevin. Number three is a presentation by the Spence Agency regarding open enrollment for Medicare Part D eligible retirees and the proposed changes the board may take action following this presentation.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. We're grateful to be here. My name's Ed Spence. We were told that we had between six and 10 minutes. Mary Ann's very concerned. She thinks that I'll use all that time up introducing us. I'll try to be, tell you what I think is important. I've been in the financial services and health insurance type business here in Goldsboro 41 years. Mary Ann with me for about 20. We have currently already an ongoing working relationship with Wayne County and the Human Resources. We've been helping employees with their health insurance post-retirement for years now. They've been coming to our office, so we've got a track record of working there. Really, the three reasons that are most important for us making this presentation. Number one, benefit improvement for the retirees. Number two, I think for HR, a smoother operation procedure. And as stewards of our taxpayer dollars, I think that benefit to the commissioners is that we project about a $90,000 per year premium in savings and premium, and that's guaranteed for two years. So Mary Ann is the one who has really been at the forefront of our practice working with HR. She's the Medicare expert, so I'm turning it over to her to kind of go over the benefits. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your time. My Apple Watch heart rate went up. I got a little notice that my heart rate was up, so if I'm a little nervous, just bear with me. So currently, the retirees, when Louise notifies me when somebody's ready to retire, and they come to our office, and we help enroll them in a Medicare supplement and a prescription drug plan. What we are proposing now is a different type of plan that puts the medical hospitalization and prescription drug coverage all together, and just kind of want to compare those benefits. It pretty much offers a $0 copay both in and out of network to the employees for their medical hospitalization, and they do have copays for their prescription drugs. It's called the passive PPO, and it looks and feels a lot like a supplement with no network restrictions or copays, which equals little or no difference to the retirees when they receive their benefits. As Ed mentioned, we've estimated a savings of $90,000 per year to the county. Since the drug plan is included with it, you're not paying extra for a drug plan, and the formulary is actually larger on the plan that we're offering, the PPO plan that we're offering, better copays in most circumstances. I think there's one tier that there's a copay, about $2 more. And there's no donut hole, as you might be familiar with if you are any familiar with Medicare, but it does not have the donut hole with the prescription drug coverage, which is really nice. For the currently, the retirees, there's a, some people are on a Plan J, some people are on a Plan F, some people are on a Plan G. It's all based on their age and what, when they enrolled as to what plan they're on, because different plans were discontinued throughout the years that y'all have had the retiree program. This would put everybody on the same plan with the exact same rate, so it's an easier bookkeeping for everybody else. There would be no Part B deductible, which right now is $233, so they wouldn't have to meet that Part B deductible. For Tier Two, the copays would increase to just $4. Tier Three and Four copays would be considerably cheaper on the drug plan than what they're paying now with the drug plan with Blue Cross. I mentioned there wouldn't be a donut hole. A gym membership would be included. The Silver and Fit would include a gym membership right now. They, employees have to pay $50 a year to participate in the Silver and Fit program, and that would be something that would be now $0. There would be a vision benefit with a $0 exam and $150 towards eyewear that they currently do not have. They would continue to have a hearing benefit of $0, and then a hearing aid benefit that gives them a specific copay for hearing aids that they don't have. Well, they do have that right now. And then it also includes a free personal emergency response system, you know, like the "I've fallen and I can't get up" where everybody would have access to that program as well. We did prepare a PowerPoint, but when our time got shortened a little bit, I didn't think we'd have time to go through all of that. But this is something that we would present actually to the employees. We would be, you know, available to do training sessions to the, for the employees, and this would be what we would present to them to let them know what their benefits would be. And pretty much that's it.
So let me understand this. Sounds like I need to come talk to you.
You might need to, yeah.
Because it's less cost, but more benefits to the retirees.
Yes, sir.
So win-win.
Right. And this is a new program, really, that's come to North Carolina from Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina. It is a Medicare Advantage plan, but it has been tailored to Wayne County where, you know, a lot of Med Advantage plans had in and out of network benefits. This plan would not. They would still be able to go to their regular providers. And anywhere in the United States, as long as they took Medicare, they'd still be, have access to their providers that they would want to go to. So yes. And it is a specially designed plan for Wayne County and is a new offering that, you know, we haven't been able to offer before.
Yeah, well, it's a two-year plan, correct?
Two years, yes, sir.
And the average or the estimated savings is $90,000 per year or for the whole?
Well, right now, it's $90,000 per year. You know, you'll have enrollees that are enrolling throughout the year, which may change that a little bit, but not, I mean...
Just per year, not, not, I got you.
Right.
Just round figures.
Right, right.
And you said round figures in the event that the number of participants goes up by five or down by five.
I got you. I understand.
But the rate guarantee is for a two-year cycle.
Got you.
And the enrollment process would still be the same. HR would notify us, and then we'd do a one-on-one with the retiree and help them enroll in the plan, and then we become their agent. So if there's, you know, issues, problems, concerns, we're right here locally and able to help them with that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the presentation by Spence Agency for the Medicare Part D eligible retirees' proposal changes. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? I think this is a no-brainer.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'm sure our retirees are going to thank you as well.
Yeah, well, I enjoy working with them. We enjoy working with them, so we'll continue to do as we always.
Great. Thank you so much. And don't be nervous next time.
Okay.
Okay, with that in mind, we'll move to the consent agenda with the addition of item eight on the purchase of a lot. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, we now are going to move to public comments.
No one signed up, sir.
Okay, we have no one that has signed up for public comments. So we'll move on now to the county managers' report.
Well, on that, what they just presented on, that's a good deal, because I know my parents always fell in a hole there for a month or two in prescription benefits, and if you had any medical ailments, you know, that can add up tremendously. So that's a big deal. Only thing I'll say is remember to get out to vote. Maxwell Center, Public Library, Mount Olive, trainee vote, early voting, 8:00 a.m. to 7:30, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 3:00 o'clock on Saturday. Remind you all of the state of the community address hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, which is November the 8th at 11:00 a.m. at the Goldsboro Event Center, and that's all I have, sir.
All right. Then we'll move on to the Board of Commissioners Committee reports and comments. Mr. Williams.
Yes, just want to remind everyone to get out and vote November 8. It's very important. A lot of people have died just to have the right to vote. Don't take it for granted. One vote can change the dynamics of any and everything pertaining to the quarter cent tax. There's been concerns that it's not going to pass, and my perspective of it is that it's a, it's something that's needed. It helps with public services. There's needs. When you go some, to some other town, some other city, you're paying those sales taxes, and they're helping those communities. They're helping them with everything that they need from EMS, from healthcare, to senior services, to schools. And we're behind here in this community, and we need those extra dollars. So I just say, please come out and support it. There's a need. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Foster?
No comment.
No comment.
You call your name, Mr. Gurley.
Yes, sir. I had a couple of phone calls this week, and I hadn't had a chance to speak to the sheriff about it, but I'm sure he knows. There's a kind of a scam going around that they're calling our senior citizens, or our grandparents, and parents for that matter, stating that this, their grandchild, and this, in this case, is a grandson, never says his name, says, I'm your, you know, you know, one asked him, said, "Well, which grandson are you? I've got several." "Well, I'm your oldest." Well, she didn't have but one. So it's a scam going around. They're asking for money because they're in trouble. So it is a scam. If you do get this, report it to the Sheriff Department, and if you can get a phone number when it comes through, write that phone number down so you can forward it to the Sheriff Department. The next thing is, as I've stated on several occasions, please consider being a volunteer at your local volunteer fire department in your community. We take all professions. We need, we need everybody. And just because you think you can't fire doesn't mean that we don't need you, because we need people to run the day-to-day business. We need people to run the trucks, which is where I'm at now. We need people to direct traffic. There's all needs in the fire and volunteer fire service, and the volunteer fire service is something, as we put out here this past week, is probably the hardest thing that you've, that you've ever loved to do. Next thing is the sales tax. I am a proponent of passing this sales tax. There is a, and I don't understand the reasoning behind somebody that owns property not voting for it. And I'm just going to kind of lay it the way I see it. This quarter cent, which is a quarter of one penny, just a quarter of it, is going to project it to bring in 2.6 to 2.8 million dollars. One cent on our property taxes, which 40% of us own property in the county. One cent brings in 900,000. So basically, that's three cents on a property tax. So, I mean, just think about the actual money and the people, everybody's paying it, not just the property owners. As Commissioner Williams said, people that come in from other counties, just going through, or if they're going to Busco Beach, or if they're going to Paramount Theater, or wherever, they're actually paying. And they're coming in, they're doing their thing, and they're leaving, and chances are, they don't use our services. So I would ask that, that our, that our citizens of our county passed our sales tax referendum on the ballot. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Acock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would follow up on the quarter cent sales tax. I agree with Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Gurley. And really, if you look at it, you know, when you, we say a fourth of one penny, the revenue to bring in, and what most people don't understand is, in a lot of cases, you're already paying it. You go buy something now, you know, it's, you're already paying it. And by it being collected, it goes to the state, but the county does not get it back. And also, just keep in mind, this does not, it does not include gasoline. Gasoline's got a separate tax. It does not include any, any medicine, any prescriptions, and any unprepared food that is not applied to. Basically, the disaster that you got to have, it does not apply to it. And again, as has been said, everyone pays sales tax. Everyone doesn't pay property tax. And the burden on the, on the property owners, and no disrespect to people that don't own property, because, you know, they're, they're just as important as anyone else is. But just, just keep in mind that this is, this is about 2.8, 2.9 million dollars that could be going to services to provide service to everybody. And also, just, you know, like I said earlier, we have Veterans Day coming up nearing the year future. Just remember our men and women that have sacrificed so much. I am not a veteran, but they've sacrificed so much for me to have the freedom and have the privilege to serve on this board because of the sacrifices that they've made. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think everyone's aware that I am definitely a proponent of the quarter cent sales tax. And the reason I'm for that, being a conservative Republican and still being for this quarter cent sales tax, is there has to be revenue to operate government. It's a necessary evil, but there has to be the revenue there to support government. This quarter cent sales tax is a way to provide that revenue and spreading that across the entire population, as well as those people that come into our community to visit. I'm surprised to see how many counties have already passed this quarter cent sales tax. It's a quarter of a penny, but basically, you're talking about one penny on $4. And as many people have stated, you're really already paying it. When you go to pay your, what is it, six and three quarters cents? When you go to pay that, they don't give you a quarter of a penny back. They just take it. They round it up. So in a lot of cases, you're already paying the tax. I just hope that our community will come together and vote yes on that. We've got a busy day ahead of us. We've not only got this meeting, we've got an interlocal government meeting that we're having with our municipalities at 12 o'clock, and then we are going to be meeting with Judge Beth Heath in regards to the Recovery Court and Recovery Together, E and C, this afternoon. So we've got a busy day ahead of us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Back to the sales tax just a minute. You know, as we've mentioned, you're already paying, paying the taxes, and the merchants is not getting that quarter of a penny now. They're collecting it, but the... They're collecting it, but the merchants are not, are not keeping it. That quarter, that fourth of that penny is being collected and sent to the state. We don't want nobody to think that the, that the merchants are, is, is keeping that, that penny, it's, it's going to the state and, but unfortunately the county's not getting it back.
That's a good point. Okay, with that in mind, we are wanting to go into closed session, so do I have a motion that we go into closed session?
So may I move?
Okay, we have a motion that we go into closed session for the purpose of?
Consulting with your attorneys to preserve attorney-client privilege.
All right. I have a motion to go into closed session, any discussion, hearing none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, we are in closed session.
Okay, we're back in session. At this time we're going to recess our meeting. We've got a governmental meeting at the Maxwell Center at noon and then we have another meeting after that.